Called to order the Bucksport Town Council meeting for the 30th of August 24th. Meeting's in person. If you have questions or comments, you can email ssr@buxportmaine.gov or call 469-7368. Paul KJ?
Counselor Eastman?
Here.
Counselor Morrison is absent. The Deputy Mayor, Vincent.
Here.
Mayor Stewart?
Here.
Counselor Orm speak.
Here.
Counselor Bishop?
Here.
Counselor Rankin?
Here.
Could I ask for an excuse for Counselor Morrison? He's-
Yes.
-has had some health issues?
Yep. We can note that, that we'll make an exception to our rules that we had. If anybody's okay with that? Don't need a motion on that, do we?
Do we need a motion on that?
Technically, you should. I think there's been-
Motion to excuse Counselor Morrison's absence.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Thank you. Presentation of Town Council recognitions. We have none. Minutes of previous meetings from council, minutes of eight three twenty twenty-three. How the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes? Receive and review correspondence. We have, apparently we were Verona cleans for the last month.
Right.
But that is a lot of good work over there for the guys going, guys and gals going over there. So we had four calls on Verona. And then we also had a press release for insurance rebate, which is always nice to see. Almost $10,000 worth.
That's the highest one we've ever received.
Yeah, I thought it was. Yeah. Any questions on any of that? All right. Ordinances. We have several first readings. First is a solar contract zone, portion of map zero zero two, lot zero one one. Any questions on that?
I'd given you an updated draft of that. When I drafted that, I modeled it after the Central Street one, and there was some references in that that I didn't catch the first time. This, the drafts you have in front of you that will also be out here for the second reading and the public hearing just cleans up the deed references and that language, but that's what you have. There, this limits the, that contract zone to only the 20 acres identified for the 1.99 megawatt. Said it can't be visible from Route one or Route forty-six. It limits it to that, and if it isn't used for that, then it reverts to its prior zoning designations. And it doesn't allow any additional development in that 20 acres for this purpose, other than that 1.99 megawatt facility. Which is what you had discussed with them when you initially indicated.
And next is a first reading of the commercial solar moratorium ordinance. Is that modeled up any ways?
It's modeled up to the last two we did. One for the marijuana and one for the landfill. And it's 180 to get, 180 days. I know that our code officer had talked about workload and whether or not that would be possible. If it isn't done in 180 days, it can, you can extend that. You can do an extension.
Next, we have a first reading of the PPI program, Bucksport Safety Accessibility and Economic Study. Hope you ever had a chance to look through that report. Pretty intense.
Took me a week, I know.
There is a, a second reading and a public hearing that would be associated with this at the September seventh meeting.
And next is a charter change for council wages that we talked about during the budget process. All of these are first readings, and I assume that most of them are, all of them will be set up for second readings and a public hearing.
They are. The charter-
Does the charter change have to go through a vote?
It has to go to referendum. All of these, the, the PPI program-
Oh, that's the act.
-and the charter change would need to go to referendum for a public vote. But the charter change, the way that I worded it, in order to avoid the need for a full charter change, which is a referendum vote every time you adjust wages for council, it says that you'll determine wages annually during your budget process for the next year. But it also, in this year, sets them at what you discussed, what you budgeted, which was the $50 for regular members and sixty.
So we're having that language in the charter. You don't have to go through a charter change.
That's right, every time. Yeah.
Any questions?
That's the way it's written.
Yep. All right. Next is discussion items. Regulatory Review Committee update from eight twenty-four twenty-three. Got mark?
Yep. We discussed the potential use of the Bucksport motor in the section of the paper street that we have, and we've asked for more information from the-
Did you guys start that at six?
Six thirty.
I was thinking of six, five, I have a long meeting, but I'm there. Next is Bucksport Bay Business Coalition request for a different area of waterfront for vendor bender events.
I believe Ms. Doty's here too.
Yep.
So, that side didn't work.
Could you just give us your name too?
Terry Doty.
Thanks.
There, there's signs on, along the walkway over there, and now that the swings are there, so we can't put vendors over there. So the last time, I had to put them in, all in the parking lot. But it's getting bigger, and I'm not going to be able to do that for very much longer. So I really need the other way, because it's longer and gives me more room.
Okay, you heard our discussion that we had about liability and private ownership of-
Yes, and I did reach out to one of the couples who I guess had a complaint, and she was going to talk to her husband, haven't heard. And I have no problem, like bypassing that property and put like caution tape or whatever, so nobody goes on it, and then just continue on for the people who don't care.
Well, it's not that they don't care.
Well, that, I mean, there's been vendors along that walkway for 20 plus years, I guess.
And we look at, I think we've been lucky.
Yeah, so-
Or other folks have been lucky.
It would be really bad if I had to cancel the vendor bender, especially since it's already taken off even after the first one.
So why can't you go that way? Because it looks like it's almost the same length, and I'm asking.
There's, there's the railroad tracks, there's the story signs, there's the swing sets, and it just kind of gets, it's just too hard. And also, there's a slope. So for people who want to put their tables on a slope, they can't do it. So, and there's bushes too along that way. So it's just, it's hard.
How many vendors do you have coming?
Oh, this next time? Well, it depends. Like, Monday, I have, I think, 12 signed up so far. The September eleventh, I've got six food trucks. That's just food trucks. And they keep going on and on. So it's just, everybody likes the idea and wants to, for it to continue, and it would just be a bummer if I had to, like, call it quits.
Terry, how far down that other way do you feel, you know, beyond Camden?
Um, eventually. I think so, because I keep getting more and more. And after the first one, we had such a good response that people were messaging me saying that they want to sign up for the remainder of the year. And I want to continue it the next year, which I hope will go down. I mean-
But, I mean, could you get by if you, because we do own in front of the historical society and in front of Camden, right? So you could get as far as Marina. Would that be enough for-
Plus going in the other direction also.
I mean, or the parking lot.
That would make sense.
I, I still don't know about the other, still the other way, because it starts sloping right when there's the gazebo, and there's the grass, and it kind of slopes down. And then there's a bush, and then there's signs, railroad tracks. So it's kind of hard, because you'd have to space all these vendors out quite a bit. So I'd like to get as many food trucks. I mean, we had three people come down and say, where's there a place to eat on a Monday evening? So if I got like a, you know, food truck and created a food court, people have an option to go. And then all the vendors along the way are plus. But it would just be too hard to like space them out way too far from each other.
I think what's actually ours to, to give would be only up until the Marina.
To the entrance to the Marina. I mean, for now, could you fit into that?
I could, probably-
Would you address it next year?
Yes, up until October eleventh. If I had to have a cutoff for vendors, then I'll have to do it. But I want to make this thing turn into like a big street fair type thing or farmer's market that people can actually take advantage of, since they can't do it from, what, twelve to three while people are at work.
Sure. Yeah. But do you feel like if we said to that point-
If it to the Marina, yes, yes.
The remainder of this year?
Yes.
I'm okay. That we own.
It can't be in the Marina parking lot.
Correct.
Can be up to, up to the Marina parking lot.
And there's the rocks there. There's the rocks, there's the strip of grass, and then there's the walkway. So that's, like, it's obvious where the Marina starts, is what I'm saying. So as long as it's between the rocks and the, and the walkway, that would give you plenty of room, and it wouldn't infringe on the Marina at all.
And on the other side, we have all the space between Camden-
Right.
Behind Camden to the historical society.
Right.
Wasn't there some discussion too about using the parking lot behind the post office? Did we talk about that last time?
It's- Yeah, but it, it would be too small.
Well, I mean, like, if, if you're getting big enough, being able to like have that as well, and then using your strip waterfront, say they're traveling between the two spots. I'm just trying to find-
Yeah, I know.
-a way to get-
Right.
-you to be able to say, you know, you have 25 people signed up. Yes, we have enough space to, we can put you here.
But I know that they would want to be on the walkway and not stuck in, you know, the post office parking lot or whatever.
Well, I think we're going to cross a new line pretty soon with agreements and property scenarios, something that we have to work on to figure out. But to solve your problem immediately, I think that's probably the most we can have the power to give you.
We had this discussion a couple of years ago. For anyone who was on the council then, we talked about putting food trucks on the walkway. And it didn't go well. That there was a, a large number of people who objected to the idea of the town allowing food trucks to be on the walkway. We talked about using the veterans parking lot for some. There were a lot of people who came in who were concerned that we were commercializing the walkway whose original purpose. Somebody has to remember this besides me. We were here with people who were. And the fact that we have had Go Sport or Bay Festival or, or three or four events in a year is different than an event every single Monday night for 10 weeks or 12 weeks or whatever. And I'm not saying it's bad, but it's different in terms of the use of that walkway and, and how much of it is an event as opposed to passive recreation. And, and so while I think getting through this season and figuring out how to best utilize this is great. I, I think the council at some point needs to talk about what, how commercialized are, do you wish the walkway to become? Because if you do, you're going to have to renegotiate your agreements with property owners.
Yep.
Number one. And number two, you're going to have people who object, because they're walking their dogs, they're doing, and they're not, I'm not making up the fact that people were unhappy when we talked about having food trucks, even in the town dock parking lot or that parking lot down there during, seasonally. We said we could just do a couple as a trial to see. Businesses on Main Street were unhappy as well.
So, I mean, I guess I'm trying to understand. People want things brought to the town. Bucksport needs a spotlight on the town. So either you want something to come to the town, or you don't. I mean, I, this is just one of the things. The spot, the walkway is one of the Bucksports' claim to fame. So if that goes away, what really do you have?
What we're saying is we're going to find that happy meeting where it is, that it's a, it's a combination use. It can't, we don't, people don't want to be one or the other. And they don't want to turn over.
Right. We could use the rest of the season as a good gauge for that, for next year.
And this is every other week?
Right. It's the second and fourth Monday evenings for two and a half hours.
Yeah. I mean, I'd be okay to move up to the Marina, you know, that, where we talked about Camden spot and back to the parking lot. We're going to have for now.
And you, you have what, three more events this year?
Let's see, twenty eighth, four.
Four more events this year? Yeah.
And all of them sample size too, right? Like, it's not like there's only been two events here, and people are being asked to decide the good and bad about that. There, the five is a much better sample size for that. So I, I agree.
If you can get through this process of discussing it prior to next year, when it comes out, then at least you have a process.
Right.
A little more of a thought process.
It at least provides answers to those who have concerns that we've had X amount of events and Y amount of attendees and Z amount of support of businesses. You know, there's, it's, it's easier to do stuff with data than without it. And this provides a great sample to see how well received it is.
In my days are a problem here.
Exactly. And also, a lot of the businesses, they close at five or something. So this is even after. So I wouldn't be competing with any of the businesses on Main Street.
And that may have been part of the issue with food trucks that, that had locations here seasonally.
Right.
Because that was the-
It wasn't going to be at all. I mean, they were here for-
It was a seasonal thing.
So are you okay with going to Marina and then going the other direction as far as you want to?
I mean, if you don't need the other side, you can use the parking lot and move onto the Marina.
Right. I think I could probably get away with that. I just don't think the other side's going to work. There's too much stuff there and the sloping, so, you know. But, yeah, that would work.
Okay. Thank you.
Sweet. Thanks.
Terry, one quick question. How many did you get on your last one? How many people you think came through?
I, I don't know. There was, there was a pretty good sized crowd.
I was down there. It was a pretty good turnout, actually. Yeah. I was surprised, because I was wondering. Right. I was like, how's this going to go? And I wound up down there for an hour and a half eating and talking to everybody.
Yep.
So, yeah, it actually popped off pretty good.
Good, good.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We don't need to do another departmental, all right? All right. Next is agenda items. First is resolve twenty twenty-four dash zero four to set the mill rate for the twenty-three twenty-four, twenty twenty-three twenty twenty-four tax year. Resolve is to set the mill rate for the twenty twenty-three twenty-four tax year at $13.95 per thousand. Budget adopted requires an amount of $8,138,566 to be raised for education, municipal county, and tip appropriations. And whereas the, based on the current municipal taxable, taxable valuation of $603,953,130 is necessary to support the budget. Whereas this mill rate reduction results from the change in construction cost schedules necessary to bring property values in line with property sales. And whereas the cost schedule changes were necessary in order to be in compliance with state valuation standards and allow for full value for homestead exemptions, veterans exemptions, and receive a full value of state revenue sharing. And whereas the reduction in mill rate does not equate to a reduction in property bill, in property tax bills due to the increases in local county and school budgets. Only those enrolled in the state senior property tax stabilization program will see bills that were the same as last year and be resolved by the Bucksport Town Council and Council, Town Council Assembly to approve the mill rate for twenty twenty-three twenty twenty-four real estate and personal property taxes at $13.95 per thousand. Public council like to proceed. Motion approved. Second. Comments?
I, I, we've talked about this the entire time, that taxes would be going up, but it's more complicated than a straight normal because our valuations are not normalized to what, a more accurate assessment of what it would, these properties are selling for. Because we were at 66 percent, which is well below the okay line. The other thing that will complicate this is for the 260 or so senior citizens who apply to participate in the tax stabilization program for this year, their tax bills will be identical to their tax bills from last year. However, that program was done away with by the legislature this year. So this will be a one year in which that, your, as of the twenty-four twenty-five tax year, the tax bills received by all of those people would, will be at the actual valuation that's on their property, which will be an increase. And there is a, another program that the legislature has approved, which is more targeted towards income, which the first program was not. And it will be accessed through income tax filing. So it will not have anything to do with the town.
Well, that's not true.
Go ahead.
Um, there are two, it's an expansion of two programs. So one is through your income tax filing, and then the other one is going to be a tax deferment program, which defers the taxes on the property as long as that individual owns it. So if they pass away or they sell it, that taxes then still owed to the town.
Oh, they have to recapture it?
Yeah. Yeah. There's a recapture with interest. Yes.
It basically creates a lien on the property for the cost of the taxes, but that's at the state level.
Yeah, but they apply at the town level first. Yes. Any other questions?
Okay, then what are we going to see, uh, new values?
Um, I have them. Anybody can see them if they want to, but I plan to commit taxes tonight, depending on when we leave, or tomorrow morning. And then they'll all go to the front door, and they'll be sent out.
Anything else? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? Next is resolve twenty twenty-four thirteen to approve bids for the Franklin Street retaining wall. Other council like to proceed? Motion approved. Second. Any questions?
This was the best bid we possibly could have gotten. And I say that because this is the year we're paying for all of it out of our pocket. And in essence, we're paying the same amount of this as if we had gotten a 50% grant based on remaining bids. And the entity that's getting the, is the one who's actually done the physical work to build these walls for us over the past several years, so. Rich provided these numbers, and I was doing a happy dance when I saw the shore, because it, it is, makes this a much more affordable project. Because our, our MPO eligibility is tied up in our Central Street project that's also happening this year, so.
So the remainder of this money will go to that, in theory?
No, we'll only spend this much out of-
As opposed to twice that?
Yeah.
That's what we have for all, you know.
The MPO one is already, that set aside is already there for the 50% of that. And this is a really invisible wall. This is, we have some that are, you know, like, the one down by the light, those. We get comments on the, all the time. This is another, that Franklin Street intersection is-
It might actually be the worst wall. I don't know if you've seen it lately.
It's the worst.
It goes forward to the street, and then in the corner intersection of Franklin and Central, the bottom corner has disintegrated. I'm surprised the whole wall doesn't come crashing down yet.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed? A quick question on the next resolve, on the resolve itself. It's twenty twenty-four dash fifteen. Just wanted to make sure that we're approving. And then the active date shows the twenty-first.
I'm sorry. It should be twenty-four.
Yeah. And is it fifteen or is it fourteen, like it says on the?
It's fifteen.
It is fifteen. Okay. Thanks. Resolve twenty twenty-four fifteen to approve the Route forty-six plow collar track with land for excavating for a three-year period. How the council like to proceed? Motion approved.
Second.
Any questions? Only one bid we received.
That's all we received.
That's something to think about with our bid process moving forward, with some of the things. We've been having that debate about put it out to bid and not put it out to bid. And this really spurs the thought process of, if someone's being loyal to us, maybe we should reward that with a renewal.
And this, we renewed it twice already. I think thought is also just as a check too at times.
There's a lot of, if anybody's willing to do anything and do a good job at it right now, that's, that's pretty rare.
That's the issue right there. Yeah.
So, them being the only bidder. I hear, I hear your point, but-
Well, I would assume that, you know, the council in three years may just say, you know, like we did the last time, just extend these folks and everybody's happy with services too.
Yeah.
And then look at it.
They, they kept their ask very reasonable, 3% increase and the 5% that we had budgeted anyway, estimating if that works. So, worked out.
All those in favor? Opposed? Passes? And lines resignations, appointments, assignments, elections. We have none?
We do have-
Oh, we do? Did I miss them?
Well, no, I have the letter that I got today that wasn't in the package, but-
Oh, I don't want to hear it.
I don't want to say it, but, um, it's on my manager's report, but our town clerk, Jacob Graham, has obtained a position as a town manager in another community, which has been his goal for, I've known since I hired him. That was his career goal. And I'm, I'm exceedingly proud of the work that he's done in order to be not only ready to do that, but hired out, I think, of a field of 35, which really is, I, we're very proud of you, and I'm mad at the same time. It counts for anything, but you do need to accept his resignation.
Motion approved. Second. Any questions, comments? When do you, when you start, Jacob? Do you know?
Twenty-fifth of September.
Twenty-fifth of September.
If we don't accept.
He will still go.
He can beat me on the favor all day long.
He has indicated, because we have an election coming up and we'll be in transition, that he would assist us during the election. I'm making sure that is, goes right.
Well, I think you realize we all wish you very well, and Pittsfield is absolutely getting a great person to, to run that town down here, so. We still don't like KFC on high school, but that's okay. All right. All those in favor? Item ten is approval of quitclaim discharges and deeds. We have one panel with S. Cody map twenty K, lot sixteen, taxing discharge on six nineteen twelve, six nineteen twenty twenty-three, six seventeen twenty fourteen, six sixteen twenty fifteen, six twenty-two twenty sixteen, six twenty-one twenty seventeen, six twenty twenty eighteen, six nineteen twenty nineteen, six thirty twenty twenty, and six fifteen twenty twenty-one. How the council like to proceed? Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor? Passes? Next is Brian Manning, map oh twenty-two, lot oh twenty-two, taxing discharge for six fifteen twenty twenty-one. How the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor? Approved. Item eleven is the town manager report.
Um, the road for the Buck, the Buck Smills Culvert project, the road should reopen for travel no later than Monday, August twenty-eighth. Mr. Wardwell contacted me today and told me that it would be open and buses could run, et cetera. The guardrails will not be entirely installed by then, but we'll have jersey barriers up until those are finished, which will be within the, at the beginning of the week. The Department of Labor inspection for our SHAPE program is Monday and Tuesday of next week. Departments have been working hard to make sure that we are ready for this comprehensive inspection. Maintaining this SHAPE designation across our department saves the town significant costs for workers' compensation insurance. Thus far, we have five candidates for town council and two for school board that have taken out papers. Two council candidates have returned papers, as have both of the school board candidates. The deadline for semantic nomination papers for either council or school board is September seventh. The, our Community and Economic Development Director, Rich Rotella, will be attending the MMA convocation in Castine at MMA on Monday afternoon to represent the town of Bucksport. I'm sorry to miss it this year. It's always a great event. Today is the eighth anniversary of my first day working in the town of Bucksport, that has to be the longest interim gig in history. Seriously, I'm thankful every day that I get to be the town manager of this great community. As part of their assessment statewide of PFAS contamination, the DEP is doing testing on all sites on which sludge was permitted to be spread, and this includes the former sludge spreading site for the town of Bucksport, which is on Upper Long Pond Road adjacent to the sludge storage building. The town has not done sludge spreading since two thousand and six and two thousand and seven. The DEP will be providing test results to the town after the testing has been done. We received the letter regarding this issue dated August fifteenth, and I had had a conversation with Roger Johnstone of the department on August fourteenth, he indicated that testing would be happening within a few weeks of that call, and I will keep you posted. And finally, I want to thank our assessor, um, Caitlin Eldridge for all her work this year, it's, this has been a very difficult commitment with the cost schedule changes, that senior tax stabilization program, and the difficulties encountered with our software vendor in accommodating the changes for the stabilization program, and how that let our assessor interact with it has been, um, significant, but she's maintained her sense of humor and, um, not thrown it all over the air and walked out the door, which we're very grateful for, but I just wanna note that, that all the extra work that it took to get this done, everybody's not going to be happy, but we've known that since the beginning of this budget year, but she's done a really good job of, um, getting all these pieces put together, so, just wanted to note that here. She said, I, you know, we, we don't see a lot of our people in front of us all the time, and it's important to note that when someone's been crawling through broken glass to get something done, we need to acknowledge that there was extra effort involved in it this year, for sure.
And you're not going to Pittsfield?
Not yet.
You have any other questions?
Cancel right? Peter, did we forget, um, Ghostport? Wasn't there-
That's coming up.
Okay.
Yep. So we got approval of licenses and permits, we have two, uh, first is liquor license renewed for Barone Wine and Design LLC, how the council like to proceed? Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? And next, um, I need to take up item nine on the agenda, Jacob?
Yeah.
Take a motion for that, please. Somebody-
Say it.
All those in favor? Pass. Um, we have a, another, um, permit for, uh, license for Ghostport, October twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, um, not to interfere with the marina or any potential ships, um, all, everybody has signed off, it's taking place on the waterfront, gonna have, uh, eight to four time event, thank you, did you all get the copy of this too?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm not gonna read down through it, then I hope everybody's had a chance to see it. Uh, but it does look like they're sort of using the same area that we just approved for the, for the other thing there too, so. Any questions? How the council like to proceed?
Motion approved. Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Passes? Um, item thirteen is discussion items on the agenda for the council and the public, anybody in the public that wants to jump on the agenda? Anybody from the council? Um, I just wanted to note, if you haven't been out Route forty-six, um, the property that we had, um, cleaned up out there, has, looks really good, um, they cleaned it up, and you wouldn't know it was there a few weeks ago, so, yeah, they, it looks-
That fast?
That fast.
Yeah.
That fast.
I also wanna note that the end of Gully's Road, closest to Jacob Buck Pond, has had some seasonal maintenance on that this year, we, when that whole issue was raised, it was discovered that the town had maintenance responsibilities seasonally on a portion from Jacob Buck Pond up to map nineteen lot three, which is, was, at the time the town approved it in nineteen eighty-one, land owned by a Public Works employee that, that's the way it was voted, and apparently that Public Works employee did some of the maintenance with town equipment at that time, but that was decades ago, but it's still a responsibility in that, and we were requested by a property owner on Thurston Pond to do that seasonal maintenance, to assist in there, getting in to, so we're only going as far as map nineteen lot three, it's seasonal maintenance, but like anything else, we're not gonna do it poorly, we're gonna do it so that it doesn't have to be done extensively moving forward, so if you get people saying, why the heck of a town, that's why you're up there, it's because it's part of that ball of string that we've been unwinding now for months in terms of that road.
I actually, somebody asked me that.
I thought probably somebody would ask, because I-
Well, thank you for that.
Phone calls asking if we were lost.
All right, uh, next item is fourteen, upcoming, upcoming public hearings, um, we have four public hearings at our next meeting, uh, check, yeah, at our next meeting, on September seventh.
September se- and there's one more that I didn't put on here, but it's consideration of the animal shelter proposal, that doesn't require the whole person, but it would have to go on to referendum, and you are gonna need to talk about that. So that would be also a public hearing at that date.
Is, is the information for that in, in terms of?
There is information for that in, yes.
Okay. How soon would you be comfortable sending that out?
Or I can get it out to you as, as, immediately, because the public hearing's gonna have to include that, and that's gonna have to be advertised this coming week, but it's, the numbers are-
Scary.
Scary, that's a good word, scary, to do what kind of relocation that we talked about, because commercial, the cost of commercial construction right now, from all the entities is, is between five and six hundred dollars a square foot.
Um, and just as a reminder, um, we'll meet on the seventh, and then we won't meet again until the twenty-eighth, get us back on our regular second and fourth Thursdays, so, I've gone off kilter a little bit here just to catch up with things, but, so we'll go to the seventh, and then we won't meet again until the twenty-eighth. Any finance committee meeting?
Do we need regulatory review?
Do we need a finance? Yes, we do, please. It's, uh, someone who has an existing microloan has a mortgage attached to it, said time period is ending, and she's requesting the council to review, and possibly, um, refinance. So she'd like to do that at the September seventh meeting, and while I'm up here, uh, the parties who will be receiving the award, that will be September twenty-eighth.
September twenty-eighth?
Correct.
Okay.
And do we need regulatory review?
I bet you don't.
Yeah.
For, for, uh, the motorway?
We need, we'll see where he's at, what he wants to do.
We have, we have a lot going on the seventh, if we can give him time to get something together, maybe on the twenty-eighth, would be fun.
Twenty, I'll, I'll reach out the-
See if you can do, like, we could, we did it six on the twenty-eighth, that would provide-
In the finance committee, that's me, Paul, and you.
Are you around on the twenty-eighth?
I'll be on the twenty-eighth.
That's on the finance committee meeting.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, not finance.
Regulatory review.
The microloan one is gonna be on the seventh.
Please.
Yeah, and seventh, I won't be here.
Okay.
I'll be at the school then. We can still, we can still have a committee hearing anyway, 'cause you'll be here, and you'll be here anyway?
Yes.
And we have an economic development committee meeting, the eleventh.
Okay. You will be here on the twenty-eighth?
Yes.
Regulatory review will be at six on the twenty-eighth, and finance will be at six thirty, or maybe six. Six thirty, okay.
On the seventh.
On the seventh. Hope you're taking good notes, Jacob.
All right, nothing else, taking, what should we adjourn?
Adjourn.
Second. All those in favor? Thank you.